Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, January 17th, meeting of the Chicopee School Committee. Please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In compliance with open meeting law, we are recording and live broadcasting this meeting. Is anyone in the audience recording the meeting? If so, please state your name and the reason why you're doing so. Seeing none, we'll move on to announcement of any members who are joining us remotely. It looks like we have Susan Zatella Lopes who's joining us remotely. Is that correct? Susan, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for all those who serve in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. Can we please have a roll call for attendance?
Mayor View?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Here.
Mrs. Perret? Mrs. Schofield?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Lamath?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Lopes?
Present.
And Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes and eleven present and one absent.
So just for the viewing audience, I want to let you know that the school committee member, Sandra Perret, is here. She's in the audience today. She will be sworn in officially tomorrow. And Sandra, welcome to the meeting. Unfortunately, because you're not sworn in, you won't be able to participate. And obviously, you already know that. So we're looking forward to having you involved in the next meeting and those that follow. Public announcements by committee members. I'll start to my left with the vice chair, Don Lamath.
Yes, we've had a couple of snowstorms, one of them on the big side. And because of public safety, I'm imploring everybody to shovel their sidewalks. I made a trek down Chicopee and Meadow Streets, and there's several that weren't done. I mean, luckily, it was warm enough and most of it melted. But guys, you gotta shovel those sidewalks for the kids. We don't want any more injuries. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sonny Brooks?
I would just like to say, check on your neighbors. If you haven't seen your neighbor, look in on them. Let's look out for each other. It's cold outside.
Thank you. Grace Goldfield?
Yes, I'd just like to offer sympathy and condolences to the Zigorowski family on the passing of Councilman Zigorowski's wife, Patty.
An angel who walked among us and is now an angel watching over us.
Thank you.
Chet Zatella? Thank you. Doug Gerard?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to offer up condolences to the Zigorowski family. Both boys today at the funeral gave just an unbelievable eulogy. And, you know, when they were describing their mother as an angel, they weren't kidding. She certainly was. And I was just watching the news this evening before the meeting, and I heard about a student that got hit by a school bus, trapped underneath it in Florida. So my heart goes out to their family. And, you know, parents, if you can educate your kids and let them know that they really should stay on the sidewalk until the bus is far away to avoid any kind of catastrophes like this. Thank you.
Deanna Russo?
Yeah, thanks. So I just wanted to note that the community meeting for Word One is on January 22nd, so coming up. I've seen these shared on the Facebook page, so excited that our word's coming up. It's from 9:00 to 10:30, and then also in the evening from 5:30 to 7:00. I hope to attend the evening and hope to see more people there as well.
Thank you. Jason Douth?
I'm all set, Mayor. Thank you.
And Ron Barcelo. I'm sorry, Ron Bernard. Jeez.
All set, Mayor. Thank you.
And David Barcelo?
I'm all set, Mayor.
And Susan Zatella Lopes?
Thank you. I'm all set.
And our superintendent?
Just to give the evening to everyone and stay warm. And winter is here. So of course, I would just like to remind the community that we definitely try to keep kids in school. But when schools cancel or delayed, we definitely do it in the best interest of safety and security of staff and students.
Thank you, Superintendent. We have no public input. No one signed up today, so we'll move on. We have no visitors scheduled, and we'll go right into our agenda. It's approval of minutes 24-1-7.
Move that the minutes of the organizational meeting of the school committee held on January 3rd, 2024, be approved.
Vice Chair?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the minutes? Anyone joining us from Zoom? We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. Reports 24-1-8.
Report on personnel action taken.
Unit defer to HR Director?
Yes, I'd like to defer to HR Director Deb Green.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. For the last two weeks, our total new hires have been 10. That has been one Unit A member, five Unit E members. That would be Unit A as in the teachers, and Unit E is paraprofessionals or teaching assistants. There were five resignations and zero retirements. As of today, we have 71 openings on school spring. 29 of those are Unit A, 29 are Unit E, and of those 20 are special education openings. In Mrs. Perret's absence, I would like to read the conferences. Most of these are all one-day or virtual conferences that we have numerous staff attending, guiding behaviors in early childhood, controlling conflict for school leaders. The IMCAST ALT review session was attended by a number of staff members. The mass legal webinar sessions, 1 through 3, is being attended by a number of us in preparation for negotiations. The Mass Midwinter Meeting Conference is being attended by Ms. Belleville and Dr. Ware. The DESI History Social Science Leaders Meeting is being attended. Mayford, the School Health Education Conference, School Mental Health, and the third mass legal session having to do with strike and recovery is being attended by the entire executive team. Thank you.
Thank you. New business, 24-1-9.
Move that the bills warrant S010524 totaling $121,272 be approved.
Sonny, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And Jay Douth, could you please read into the official record the warrants?
Absolutely. So tonight, we'll be voting on two warrants. I will read the totals of the two warrants combined into the record, and then we will vote on them individually. For athletics, $5,740. Food services, $133,929. General expenses, $99,290. Grants, $131,434. Special education, $335,237. Transportation, $2,176, for a total of $707,809.
Thank you. As mentioned, we'll be voting on the first warrant. That's S010524 for $121,272. Any discussion on the first warrant? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret? Oops, excuse me. Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
And Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. 24-1-10.
Move that the bills warrant S011224 totaling $586,537 and 38 cents be approved.
Grace Goldfield, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion on the second warrant?
Yes, please.
Sure. Susan. Susan Zatella Lopes?
In this warrant this evening, we're going to be voting on whether to approve a $282,500 bill this evening from, we're going to be paying Kelo and Benick, I hope I pronounced that correctly. They're a company on East Street in Chicopee. The payment is to get some work done. The bill is for an architectural and engineering services for the new maintenance warehouse that is currently out to bid. The new warehouse will be located at 16 James Street, and it will house the craftsmen and the tools and the supplies that are currently located at Chicopee Comp. High School at the James L. Stefanic Shop Building. So the new warehouse will free up more space for career technical programs at Chicopee Comp. High School. So I hope everything goes smoothly with this payment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any further discussion on the warrant? Vice Chair, Don Lamath?
Yes, this $282,000, should this be coming out of student money or should it be coming out of some sort of capital?
That's a good question. It's currently coming out of ESER, but it's not?
Oh, it's coming out of ESER. I guess I'm good with it then.
Yes.
Oh, I'm just saying, because ESER was designed for that.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella? Eleven yes.
Motion carries, 24-1-11.
Move that the job description for early childhood coordinator be approved.
Jack, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Dr. Ware?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a new position that we are looking to create due to the fact that our early childhood needs are busting at the seams. Currently, we have Zatella preschool, and then we have preschool students at five other schools in our district. And so we are growing due to the fact that we made a pledge to actually offer universal preschool, as well as in one of the requirements through DESI in order to use ESER funds, one of our evidence-based practices was to focus on pre- childhood, I mean, pre-K and early childhood literacy and access for students. So this person would actually oversee that process, which includes overseeing the lottery process that supplies for the students that go to all of our different programs, as well as work closely with the assistant superintendents, that's for accountability instruction, as well as student support services, as well as special ed, as we continue to grow our preschool. And that the fact that we currently do not have someone overseeing that, that's absorbed by the executive team. And so this position, again, would be new, is not currently in the budget. The way it will be funded would be also ESER, which is one of the allowances through ESER to use evidence, to fund positions that support evidence-based practices, such as early childhood learning. And so this person will be under independent contract, and we're looking to actually start this person sooner rather than later, because our lottery starts very soon, and we want to get in front of it.
Grace Goldfield?
So one of my questions was, where is the funding coming from? So you said it's coming from ESER?
Correct.
And so my concern is, first of all, I see the need for the position. But my concern is, once ESER is done, which is this year, how will the position be funded?
Correct. And so we actually know ESER is going away in September 2024. So part of the conversation is twofold. One, it would have to be put into the budget. So that would be part of the budget planning process that I'm doing right now with the team. Two, would actually be through the Student Opportunity Act, which also is part of the, one of the allowances, is how to spend the money to support early childhood learning. And then three, we actually do have vacancy positions. For example, one is I have an interpreter position that I didn't fill on purpose, so that actually could support this position. So it would be threefold. So it would have to go into the budget. So you're absolutely right to say that, since ESER is going away. But it would also be funded by the Student Opportunity Act, as well as unfilled positions that I'm intentionally not filling.
Thank you.
No problem.
Sure. Vice Chair?
Yes, I'm concerned that we're filling positions on grant money, and I heard everything you just said, but I'm still concerned about it. How many more new positions are you going to be bringing forward between now and budget time?
That, so I don't have a direct answer for that. This is actually coming out of the need because of the situation we are in with our early childhood situation, the numbers and the actual overseeing of the new curriculum that we implemented, and things that we need to do to be in compliance to actually continue to support our programs. So this position itself, and then like as far as new positions, I can't honestly tell you right now. This is just really going off of need and really paying attention to what was already in the budget and really just reworking some of those vacancies that I'm looking not to fill, that are not teacher-driven, but they're on the independent contract side.
In the paper yesterday, I believe it was, there was Mara Healy's talking about funding some of the early childhood for Gateway Cities, which we are one. So if we fund this prior to her coming out with the money, are we going to be able to take that grant and fund this?
Correct. We would. We would. Yes.
Okay, so I would understand that. Thank you.
No problem.
Sonny Brooks?
My question is, who will they report to?
Mm-hmm. So the Assistant Superintendent for Accountability Instruction, that's Ms. Jen Belleville.
Okay.
Anyone else first time? Grace Goldfield, second time.
I just want to have a follow-up question with, so you said one of the positions interpreted is that you didn't sell. So what's, how does, what's that salary that would offset the salary that you have listed under this job description?
Correct. So there's actually about $100,000 in ESER, so that would be about a $5,000 to $15,000 difference. But the interpreter salary ranges between $40,000 and $50,000. That was the range that was budgeted for it. So I, again, it was about, what, 20%?
Thanks for your creativity.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the new position? We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Here. I mean, yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
And Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries, 21-4-12.
Move that the 2024-2025 school calendar be approved.
Doug Gerard, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion on the new calendar? Dr. Marcus Ware?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just presented as is part of the function of the school committee. This is the draft of the 2024-2025 calendar that was worked on the committee. So I just, if there are any in-depth questions, myself and Ms. Belleville can actually answer any questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? David Barcelo?
Yes, is this calendar cast in stone?
No, it's a draft, sir. So if there's any feedback, I'm definitely open to. If there's any questions about it. But if you once voted upon, it would be in stone. But if any changes need to be made, we would actually bring it to you all.
Well, it's just that I had gotten some calls.
David, could you just use your microphone? Thank you, sir.
I had gotten some calls from some concerned teachers about the schedule, about, you know, how certain days fall. So I was just wondering if there was going to be room for some negotiation in there, if, you know, everyone wasn't pleased with how everything's working out.
Okay. So actually, I'm going to ask Ms. Belleville to step in. She may be aware of some of those concerns. I didn't hear anything, nothing's come to my plate, but that doesn't mean it hasn't come to Ms. Belleville.
So we haven't heard any concerns that have come to the table. The committee, we have a professional development committee who actually plays a huge piece in developing the calendar. Some of the changes that I can note for you is you'll note that there's two days of new teacher orientation. That's coming off of the need that we don't provide enough, we haven't been providing enough time for some of the training for the new hires that we have. So we're planning for two days of mandatory training for all staff that are getting hired into the district. The other big change is moving that third professional development day that you typically saw at the front of the calendar year to March. And the rationale for the professional development committee behind that was that teachers are anxious to start the school year, and that's a choice PD day. And so we really And so we really need to focus on our site-based professional development and convocation and allowing teachers to get ready to prepare for the school year. With that, the March PD day will be the choice PD day. It's much easier to get high-quality professional development presenters during March as we're not vying with all other districts who are providing that professional development day that first week of school. So they had gotten some feedback, the professional development committee regarding that, and that was their recommendation. That's the only other big change.
All right, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Grace Schofield.
I just had a question with, is it in Unit A's contract that they can only start after a certain day? That, like, the last week of August? Is that, am I correct in?
You are correct in that.
All right, thank you.
And all of the half-days and the professional development days and the teacher collaboration days follow the Unit A contract.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the calendar? Jason Doubt.
I guess just, you know, I plan on supporting this, but just kind of food for thought moving forward. You know, as a parent of elementary students, I see a few of the teacher collaboration days and those fall on a Friday before a vacation, for example. And as a parent of elementary school students, you know, it does, it makes it a little tough sometimes on parents, you know, to have to find people to watch their kids one week and then find people the next week. So I intend on supporting this, but just, you know, kind of food for thought to put out there that, you know, that that is, you know, especially on those days where specifically it's only the pre-K that have half-days, you know, that that does put a strain on, on parents.
I can turn over to Ms. Belleville for that commentary.
No, I greatly appreciate that, that feedback. It has been a conversation. We did look at attendance for students. On those half-days, we understand the burden on families. It was a conversation to move it during the week. One of the concerns for the educators was that being at the end of the week, there is not the disruption of the learning during midweek. We polled the principals. The majority of the principals preferred it on the Friday as well. One of the things that I do know several of the principals are looking at is what could we do for childcare during those half-days to help support our families to address that concern? So I know that is a topic for our elementary school principals.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries twenty-four dash one dash thirteen.
Move that any member of the school committee wishing to attend the twenty twenty-four National School Board Association and SBA Annual Conference and Exhibition, April sixth through April eighth, twenty twenty-four, to do so.
Deanna Russo, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Dr. Marcus Ware.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like I'm speaking a lot tonight. My apologies.
That's okay.
And so I actually put this on there and actually I spoke with also Ms. Schofield about this. One of the, the things I know is in my purview is also to pay attention, to be fiscally responsible about how we spend our money around professional development. And so one of the things that I wanted to make sure didn't bypass the school committee, as well as I know the other opportunities, opportunities have been presented to the school committee, is that this is the, again, the National School Board Association Conference. This is specifically for school committee and school board members. Yes, it is in New Orleans. So every year they pick a major city to have the function at. But if you haven't had the opportunity to see in your packet, this workshop, workshop sessions are designed to support a lot of the work that I also would believe your subcommittees would do around supporting our students. And so I just wanted to make sure that this opportunity didn't bypass you all and you can actually vote upon it this evening.
Any further discussion? David Barcello.
Yeah, my concern would be if there's enough funding, you know, let's say everybody decided they wanted to go on a nice vacation to New Orleans. I mean, is, is there money available for all of this?
So there is a school committee line to support professional development for you all. Is it enough to support all of you? No, but we also would actually have to talk about that. It is a conversation that you all can have. If you should feel that it's really important that you all go. The other piece to that is there are, there's the, like, the mass, mass conference and theoretically there are districts that send their whole school boards just because they do feel like it's a conference that is worth it. So that would be a conversation amongst you all to talk about that. And then, of course, we could speak about how to support that and from what is in the budget.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
And Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries twenty-four dash one dash fourteen.
Organization of subcommittees, move that the twenty twenty-four subcommittee assignments be approved. A, election of officers, Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee, Chairperson, Vice Chairperson. B, election of officers, Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, Chairperson, Vice Chairperson. C, election of officers, Finance and Budget Subcommittee, Chairperson, Vice Chairperson. D, election of officers, Negotiations Resources Subcommittee, Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. E, election of officers, Curriculum Subcommittee, Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. F, election of officers, Facilities Committee, Chairperson, Vice Chairperson.
So first we'll start off with the actual committees and I want to take a moment to thank our Vice Chair, Don Lamoth, for putting your, taking your requests in and creating subcommittees that hopefully meet everyone's needs. So first, we'd like to vote on just the acceptance of our, our subcommittee assignments. I can, Dr. Ware, would you like to read them or I could read them into the record if you'd like?
I don't mind reading them. Let me, just, just a second.
And then we'll individually vote on chair and vice chair for each subcommittee. And just a point of reference, those who run the subcommittees would be the ones who vote for chair, vice chair.
Read the complete list, Mayor?
That'd be wonderful. Start with Curriculum Subcommittee.
All right. Curriculum Subcommittee, Mr. David Barcello, Ms. Susan Lopes, Mr. Chester Satella. Facility Subcommittee, Mr. Douglas Gerard, Mr. Ron Bernard, Ms. Susan Lopes, Mr. Chester Satella. Finance and Budget Subcommittee, Ms. Deanna Russo, Mr. Carlton Brooks, Mr. Don Lamoth, Mr. Douglas Gerard. Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee, Ms. Deanna Russo, Mr. David Barcello, Mr. Jason Doubt, Ms. Sandra Perret. Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee, Ms. Sandra Perret, Ms. Grace Schofield, Mr. Ron Bernard. Lastly, Negotiation Subcommittee, Mr. Jason Doubt, Ms. Grace Schofield, Mr. Carlton Brooks, Mr. Don Lamoth.
Thank you. So could, Jason, I believe you're next, entertain a motion for approval?
Uh, motion to approve.
So we have a motion to approve the subcommittees as laid out by our vice chair and approved by the chairman. Any discussion on the assignments for subcommittees? Through Zoom, so we'll take a roll call, please, to accept the subcommittees.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. Now we'll start with the election of officers. So we'll start with the Curriculum Subcommittee. And the members of the Curriculum Subcommittee are David Barcello, Susan Lopes, and Chet Satella. Could one of those members please nominate a chairperson?
May I please?
Sure. Susan Satella Lopes.
I'd like to nominate David Barcello as chairperson, please.
So we have a motion to nominate David Barcello as chairperson of the Curriculum Subcommittee. That's seconded by the chair? Any discussion? Again, we'll be voting and we have to do that orally because we have someone joining us remotely. So the voting members will be David Barcello, Susan Satella Lopes, and Chet Satella. The Curriculum Subcommittee, can we please have a roll? To accept David Barcello as the chairman.
Mr. Mayor, if I may for a moment, the order of the committees on the paper and the order of the committees on the agenda are not quite the same.
Oh.
So we were getting ready to record.
Sorry. Point of reference, we'll follow along with what's actually on the agenda, which I will start over with the Human Resource Subcommittee. Human Resource Subcommittee is Deanna Russo, David Barcello, Jason Doubt, and Sandra Perret. Could one of those members please nominate a chair?
It's got to be one of the people on the subcommittee.
It has to be Deanna, David, Jason, or Sandra. And Sandra is not a voting member tonight, so.
I nominate Jason for chair.
So we have Jason Doubt has been nominated as chairman of the Human Resource Subcommittee. Any discussion or comments? All right, we'll take a roll call. That's again a nomination for Human Resource Chair, Jason Doubt.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Three yes.
Motion carries. Vice Chair.
I nominate Sandra Perret.
Sandra Perret has been nominated as vice chair. Any discussion on the vice chair? Again, for the Human Resource Subcommittee. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Three yes.
Oh, sorry. Three yes, motion carries. And now we will move on to the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. That's Sandra Perret, Grace Schofield, and Ronald Bernard. Ron, can I get a nomination for chair?
I'd like to nominate Grace Schofield for chair of that committee, subcommittee.
Grace Schofield has been nominated for the Chair of the Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, take a roll call.
Mrs. Perret? Excuse me. Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Two yes.
Motion carries. Vice Chair, again, for the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. Grace Schofield.
I'd like to nominate Sandra Perret.
Sandra Perret has been nominated for Vice Chair of the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. Any discussion amongst the subcommittee? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Two yes.
Motion carries. Finance and Budget Subcommittee. That's, the members of the Finance and Budget Subcommittee are Deanna Russo, Carlton Brooks, Donald Lamoth, and Douglas Gerard. We need a nomination of a chairman. Vice, Don Lamoth.
I nominate Douglas Gerard for chair.
Doug Gerard has been nominated as chairman. Any discussion amongst the subcommittee? Seeing none, we'll take a roll.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Four yes.
Motion carries. Nomination for Vice Chair of the Finance and Budget Subcommittee.
I'd like to nominate Deanna Russo for Vice Chair, Finance Budget Subcommittee.
Deanna Russo has been nominated as vice chair. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call amongst the subcommittee.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Four yes.
Motion carries. Negotiations Resource Subcommittee. That's Jason Doubt, Grace Schofield, Sunny Brooks, and Donald Lamoth. Can I get a nomination for chair? Don, can I get a nomination?
I'm looking at my list. I gotta look at this list here. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm with you.
We're on finance?
We're on negotiations.
Negotiations. I nominate Grace Schofield for chair.
Grace Schofield has been nominated as Chair of the Negotiations Resource Subcommittee. Any discussion or comments? Amongst the subcommittee members, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
And Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Four yes.
Motion carries. Negotiations Resource Subcommittee Vice Chair, I need a nomination. Grace, can I get a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Don Lamoth.
Don Lamoth has been nominated as Vice Chair. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
And Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Four yes.
Motion carries. Curriculum Subcommittee, we need a chair. The members of the Curriculum Subcommittee, I feel like we're déjà vu. David Barcello, Susan Satella Lopes, and Chet Satella. I need a nomination for a chair?
I'd like to nominate David Barcello, please, for chair.
Thank you, Susan. We have, David Barcello has been nominated as Chairman of the Curriculum Subcommittee. Any discussion or comments? We'll take a roll call amongst the subcommittee members?
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Three yes.
Motion carries. We need a nomination for Curriculum Subcommittee Vice Chairman.
Susan Lopes.
We have a nomination of Susan Lopes as Vice Chair of the Curriculum Subcommittee. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call amongst the committee members.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Three yes.
Motion carries. Facility Subcommittee. Facility Subcommittee consists of Doug Gerard, Ron Bernard, Susan Lopes, and Chet Satella. We need to nominate a chairperson. Susan Satella Lopes.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Bernard, please.
We have a nomination of Ron Bernard. Any discussion on the nomination of chairman? Again, for the Facility Subcommittee, seeing none, we'll take a roll call amongst those committee members.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Four yes.
Motion carries. A nomination for Vice Chair of the Facility Subcommittee.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Gerard.
Doug Gerard has been nominated as Vice Chair. Any discussion or comments about the nomination? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call amongst the subcommittee members.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Four yes.
Motion carries. Thank you and congratulations to the members of the subcommittees, the chairs and vice chairs. Thank you for your commitment to conducting business here at the school committee. We'll move on to, new business continued, twenty-four dash one dash fifteen.
Review pedestrian safety and determine the status of safe routes to school assessments. Topic requested by Ms. Sandra Perret.
So Ron, can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the assessments.
So just a point of information, these are two requests that came in from our school committee person who's waiting to be sworn in. And she had requested that we postpone them to the next meeting. So if it'd be a favorable amendment to your motion.
I'd like to amend my motion to go along with both phones and get to the next meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion on the postponement of twenty-one dash one dash fifteen? Looking forward to that discussion at our next meeting. We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
And Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
And Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
Motion carries. 24-1-16.
Update on the Bowie School Playground, the accessibility of all school playgrounds, and to investigate having the school playground supervised by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Topic requested by Ms. Sandra Perret.
David Barcello, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
David, it's the same course of action. We were hopeful that since Sandra Perret cannot participate today until she gets sworn in tomorrow, her request was that we could postpone this discussion till our next meeting. If that's a favorable amendment.
Yes, that's fine.
So you have a motion to postpone?
Yes, sir.
Motion to postpone. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?